Good evening. Welcome to the June 19, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation. So if you would please stand for that, and then we have a special group that is going to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day. Thanks for the many blessings you've given each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to bless us throughout this evening as we work together for the city of Troy and all of its citizens and neighboring communities as well. We ask that you give extra special attention to our scouts who are in the audience this evening, who are training to be leaders of the future, and we ask that you be with each and every one of us up here at the table as we work to make decisions and come together as a unified voice as best we can representing all factions of the community. We also further ask, oh Lord, that you be with those who do not have the power or the strength to ask for your help but desperately need your help today and every other day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now, I have the privilege of asking the Boy Scout Troop 1707 if they would come to the podium. Jonathan Lindholm, which is out of Baker and Smith School, if you would come to the podium and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have one of you speak into the microphone. Excellent. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Boy Scout Troop 1707. Excellent job. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Here.
Councilmember McCown.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Councilman McCown that he would be out of the county this evening, so I will hereby excuse the absence of Councilman McCown at the regular City Council Meeting of June 19, 2017, due to being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Baker that we excuse the absence of Councilman McCown at the regular City Council Meeting of June 19, 2017, due to being out of the county. Discussion? The vote? Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four presentations this evening. First presentation is C1, a certificate of appreciation to Mike DeSantis, and I would ask City Clerk Elaine Dixon to meet me at the podium. I would like to make a special presentation at that time.
Rev Up Troy is the program that we started in 2016 to encourage students to get involved in registering to vote and voting and educating them on elections, and Mr. DeSantis over at Athens has been instrumental in our program being a great success there, and just in the last year, we've registered over 400 students to vote, so we're very proud of that.
Thank you, Elaine. It's my privilege on behalf of the Troy City Council to present a proclamation of recognition to Mike DeSantis, Athens High School teacher, and I'd like to read this. This is a testament to a wonderful teacher that we have in our community that supports our students and encourages role modeling for our students. So, Mike, if I could, I'd like to read this to you. Thank you. Whereas the -- why don't you come up? Come up here, so... Make sure we get everyone on camera here. Whereas the Troy City Clerk's office plays a crucial role in our local democracy, the office runs elections from registering voters to coordinating with election inspectors across 31 precincts on busy election days. In this packed election year, dozens of inspectors are needed to work the multiple elections, and whereas a new initiative was created to recruit election inspectors from the Troy schools in January 2016, which resulted in an unprecedented showing of young Troy residents serving as election inspectors. In typical cycles, about five students work in election. In 2006, 50 students signed up and over 45 showed up to work on the day of the presidential primary election on March 8, 2016. And whereas, the recruitment of the inspectors was only one part of a broader initiative. Rev Up Troy was created. Over 1,000 high school seniors graduate from Troy schools every year, and a great percentage of them are not connected to their local government. The REV consists of three parts: register, educate, and vote. It involves student-led registration drives in spring and fall, continuing to recruit students as inspectors throughout the year, and educating young people about democracy and elections. This initiative will hopefully foster great connections between Troy youth and their local democracy. And whereas, Mike DeSantis, Troy School District Teacher of AP History and AP Government at Athens High School, got his students involved in the Rev Up Troy program. Rev Up Troy volunteers registered over 130 students to vote during the month of May 2017, and since its inception in early 2016, Rev Up Troy has registered over 350 students at Athens High School. So now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Troy does hereby join with the citizens of Troy to express sincere appreciation to Mike DeSantis for embracing and teaching the value of volunteerism to our high school students, which contributes to making our community a great place to live, work, learn, and play. And be it further resolved, the City Council commends Mike for his achievement, leadership, and dedicated service to young people of Troy and for truly making a difference in our community. Presented this fifth day, well now it's the ninth day, of June 2017, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Mike, I want to congratulate and thank you for what you've done for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know we have two students with us this evening, and we have a whole bunch more that we want to take care of, but if you could, on behalf of the city of Troy, I'd like to make these presentations, and if you could speak a little bit about this, please. Thank you.
All right. I didn't prepare any formal speech for today, but it's an honor to be here. I truly appreciate this from the City Council and the mayor. This is wonderful, this recognition. There were several students who helped out throughout the process. We have two who are with us tonight. The rest have been, you know, they've graduated, they're off to college, or they're just enjoying summer, but I was able to rally a couple of them to come to the meeting. So I'll start here with the one to my left, Orelli Mendoza Barrowman. There you go. Thank you. And Nathan Wodowski, distributed recognition. And the others here, I'll need you to distribute to other students who are not here, but they all did a wonderful job helping out, registering people to vote, and just getting involved, which is what it's all about. So, thank you.
Elaine, did you want to get into picture here? Come on.
Yes, yes.
Come on, one more. C2 is a proclamation to proclaim June 2017 as Immigrant Heritage Month. I know Sean Wodowski is with us this evening. Did you want to say a few words before we make this presentation, Sean? Please.
Excellent.
I know we have members of Global Troy Advisory Committee with us, and if you're here in this audience, if you would come up, please.
On behalf of the Global Troy Advisory Committee, it is my pleasure to introduce this proclamation to declare June as Immigrant Heritage Month. This initiative seeks to celebrate our nation's immigrant heritage and recognize the invaluable contributions immigrants have made to our economic, political, and social landscape. This proclamation is consistent with Troy's values of diversity and openness and is consistent with our new status as a welcoming city. So without further ado, if you want to give the presentation.
It's always nice to see members of our Global Troy Advisory Committee with us, and thank you for coming this night, tonight. And I'm going to present this on behalf of you. This proclamation, Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2017, whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, strengthen our economy, and create American jobs in the city of Troy, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but also campaigning to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, Troy has become a city with the second-largest percentage of foreign-born residents in Metro Detroit. I would argue that we're number one, but I'll go along with that. The city of Troy is proud of our many immigrants who call this community home and appreciate their valuable contributions in building and enriching our nation. So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the City Council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim the month of June 2017 as Immigrant Heritage Month and invite all Troy residents to join in this celebration. And be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role immigrants have played in our nation's history, as well as their outstanding achievements today and into the future. This is signed the 19th day of June 2017 and presented to our Global Troy Advisory Committee, who have done such a wonderful job of making us a welcoming community. Signed by myself, all members of City Council. Thank you so much for representing the city of Troy, and I'd like to present this to you as representatives of our city. Congratulations. I'm dragging on you. I'm dragging on you here.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank Mayor Dan Slater and the City Council, the City Manager, Chief of Police, and everybody that works in the city for making Troy the best there is. I think we have about one-third of the city population are foreign-born. Immigrants come here, they work hard, most of them are professionals, they help the city. I just, I am honored and proud to be living in the city for almost all my life, since, at least since I've been married, and thank you very much. Thank you for all you do, from the bottom of my heart.
Hi, Nancy. How are you? Let me get the proclamation. Nancy, it's an honor and a privilege for me to present this proclamation, recognizing the 25th anniversary of the Troy Community Coalition. It's hard for me to believe, it's been 25 years, but I've been around for all of those 25 years. I'd like to present this proclamation to you on behalf of the city of Troy. Whereas the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse was created in 1991 as a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life for all who live or work in Troy by promoting a lifestyle free of alcohol abuse, tobacco abuse, and other drugs. And whereas, since its inception in 25 years ago, the Troy Community Coalition has developed and implemented prevention strategies based on our community's needs, influencing and promoting community norms to those supporting a lifestyle free from the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs through environmental strategies affecting the total population. And whereas Troy is a community that establishes and supports policies and practices that promote substance abuse prevention incentives, such as Troy Communities Coalition Alcohol and Tobacco Retail Educational Visits, Parents Who Host Lose the Most, and Project Sticker Shock. And whereas Troy is a community which recognizes that substance abuse prevention efforts are most successful when understood and initiated across all communities and where a comprehensive system monitors indicators of community attitudes, conditions, and alcohol, tobacco, and other drug patterns. And whereas Troy is a community where a variety of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-free activities and events are available to all, such as Celebrity Night Dinner, Coalition Summer Camp, Incredible Kid Recognition, and Prayer Breakfast. And whereas Troy is a community where training is provided to develop the skills necessary to prevent the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, such as Choose Wisely, Keys to Understanding Addiction Conference, Seven Habits of High-Effective Teens Leadership, and Tar Wars Tobacco Prevention. And whereas Troy is a community that recognizes that Troy Community Coalition, for its mission and goals for the comprehensive community prevention plan, it's just a wonderful organization and I'm so proud to be part of as on the advisory committee. It's been a lifelong dream for me to one day have us drug-free. So now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council does hereby congratulate the Troy Community Coalition on their 25th anniversary and recognizes the coalition's positive impact upon our community. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of Troy Community Coalition on its important 25th anniversary milestone. Presented this 19th day of June 2017, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Nancy, it's my honor to present this to the Troy Community Coalition, and thank you for what you've done for our community. Thank you so much. Thank you.
On behalf of the Troy Community Coalition, I am honored to accept this proclamation. I will hang it with pride in my office, and I am so honored that everybody recognizes the wonderful work that we do. We just kicked off our $25 for 25-year initiative, so if you haven't made a donation, we are a nonprofit, so we could really use your help. Thank you so much.
C4 is a presentation to Representative Martin Hauerlek in recognition of his support of public libraries. So I will turn the podium over to Kathy Russ, who will continue this presentation. Good evening, Kathy. Come on this side.
Thank you, Mayor Slater. Good evening, mayor and city council and everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Gail Madsjar, who is the Executive Director of the Michigan Library Association.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here, and it's an honor to be able to present this award to Representative Hauerlek in recognition of his leadership in voting for legislation that would ensure libraries have the choice to help fund their library with millages that are voted for by the voters. And his leadership has promoted transparency and accountability in government, and we truly appreciate that. And again, his leadership will help ensure that our libraries, not only in Troy but across the state, will be supported in the future. So, thank you.
So, our esteemed librarian asked me to say this, and I agree with it, public libraries do rock. I've spent many, many hours as a student at Detroit Public Library, and we spent a lot of good hours there as the, that's where I host my office hours, both in Clausen at the Blair Memorial Library and here in Troy, Detroit Public Library. And so, it's the modern-day public gathering place in the community as well is a great place to curl up with the books. So, thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Gail. We appreciate it and keep on doing your good work as well.
Next on the agenda, there are no carryover items or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from residents or businesses. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. I1, there are no mayoral appointments this evening, and I will turn the podium over to Mayor Protem Hoderek for City Council appointments.
I want to move the appointments of two student representatives to our Parks and Recreation Board for terms expiring July 31, 2018. Koolin Oak for Parks and Recreation Board and Mojang Wang for the Traffic Committee. I misspoke. One was for the Parks and Recreation, one for the Traffic Committee.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hoderek and supported by Councilman Baker that we appoint Koolin Oak as the student representative to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term that expires 7/31/2018, and Mojang Wang, the student representative for the Traffic Committee for the term that expires 7/31/2018. Discussion? Councilman Baker?
Just real quick, I, you know, we often appoint these student representatives, and I just want to say, I think it's a great thing that our city does to have the students involved in these boards, and, you know, we talked about Rev Up Troy. I think that we're doing a great job of engaging our high school students and bringing them up to be great citizens for our city, so it's really not anything about the specific members. I look forward to having them on the boards and congratulations to them as well, but just wanted to get that said.
Thank you. Well pointed out. It's wonderful. Thank you. Well, well pointed out. It's, it's wonderful that we get students involved in city government early so that they can understand some of the processes. And we couldn't do this without our student representatives. And it's nice to have their voice. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks again to those students that volunteered to be part of our community. I-2, our board and committee nominations, there are no mayoral nominations or city council nominations this evening. So we will move to I-3. There is no closed session request this evening. So I-4 is a contract wage re opener for the City Fire Staff Officers Association. I see Jeanette Menning, our Human Resources Director, moving to the podium. Good evening.
Hi, good evening Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased to be here to introduce the tentative agreement that we've reached with the Troy Fire Staff Officers Association. This agreement came about as a result of a previously negotiated wage re opener for the 2014 to 2019 collective bargaining agreement. The city and the union reopened the contract and addressed the sole issue of wages for the two remaining years of that agreement. The tentative agreement before you would change the wage increases from 1% to 3.25% and lump sum payments from $250 to $750 effective July 1, 2017 and July 1, 2018. City management supports and recommends ratifying this agreement.
Thank you Jeanette. Any questions for Jeanette this evening? Thank you. I know we held a closed session to discuss this item earlier, so I think all the questions were answered at that time. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Baker?
Like to move I-4, contract wage re opener for the Troy Fire Staff Officers Association as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve I-4, the contract wage re opener for the Troy Fire Staff Officers Association as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks for your hard work by the administration and the fire staff. I see them punching fives in the back of the room there. I-5 is a renewal of the Troy Nature Center Society Agreement. I see Elaine Bowe, our Recreation Director, at the podium. Good evening Elaine.
Good evening. Mayor and Council, thanks for having me tonight. We're here to bring the Nature Society Agreement, the renewal of it. The last time we brought this was in 2011. This agreement has worked really well for the city and the residents. I'm sure that you all are aware, there are great programming. New to this contract would be a 20-by-30 tent told classes or events on the, on the property. In addition, it would allow persons to reserve the tent, to obtain the same permissions as beer, wine, and loud as other park shelters. Gives permission for Troy Nature Society or its patrons to host events under the tent or inside the staged nature center, potentially to serve alcohol when there's a caterer and a liquor license involved. And the term of agreement is for 10 years, beginning this July 1. And there's an option to renew. Both, all the copies that you need are in here. I have Roger Kowalski and Carla Reeve here if you have any questions for us tonight.
I see them. Good evening. Any questions for Elaine or for staff for the Nature Society? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Like to move I-5, renewal of Troy Nature Society Agreement as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson and supported by Mayor Protem Hoderek that we approve I-5, the renewal of Troy Nature Society Agreement as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? Just a thanks to all of the volunteers at the Nature Center and the Nature Society for all the work you do. It's, it's one of our jewels. Certainly is. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again. I-6 is the Police Department Succession Plan. I see Chief Mayor is approaching the podium. Good evening Chief.
Good evening Mayor. Good evening Council. I'm here tonight to discuss the memorandum that City Manager Kishnik and myself submitted regarding the request for a temporary third captain. As you all know, the Police Department has used informal succession planning in preparing command officers by advanced training. We follow civil service and promote from within the Police Department. We have a current list of qualified captain candidates. To test for chief, we must have two years as captain in order to test for chief unless there's nobody with two years on the list, then anybody who's in the rank of captain can test for chief. The civil service rules are very comprehensive in this and that's merely an overview. Men will discuss how we develop our leadership, core competencies to advance, and the detailed advanced training. We recommend three captains for a short term to allow experience in the position and further mentoring by me. These three will allow competitive testing and give the city manager a choice for the new chief after I retire. This allows experienced captains and a prepared new chief of police. Once the chief is placed, we revert back to one chief and two captains. We ask the council to approve the short-term addition of a third captain during this executive leadership transition. May I say everybody answer any questions you may have, Mayor?
Thank you Chief. Any questions for the chief? Councilman Pennington?
So Chief, we're not losing you anytime in the near future here, are we?
No, I'm anticipating 18 months or so. Just trying to plan ahead, sir.
That's the near future. Is it common that we have, we've done this before, we had a third captain?
We, we did have three captains for a long time. We had three captains as deputy chief also for a short time period.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you Chief. I think it's an excellent plan. It's always nice to see that, that all of our departments are, are looking forward. I certainly support your plan. I think it's an excellent plan. I appreciate the work that you've done to bring it, bring it forward to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote, Ms. Oh, somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington?
I will move I-6, the Police Department Succession Plan.
Support.
I'm going to read it into the record.
Thank you.
Whereas it is important that during the transition to a new chief of police that there are qualified, trained, and experienced captains in place to ensure that the executive leadership is seamlessly changed. Therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council hereby approves the short-term addition of one additional captain to the Police Department.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and approved, supported by Councilwoman Abraham that we approve I-6, the Police Department Succession Plan as introduced and read into the record. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again Chief. Next is the Consent Agenda. Anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
Like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. K-1A is an announcement, announcement of a public hearing for July 10, 2017, which is a conditional rezoning application. File CR JP CR 2016-004, which is a proposed Liverneys-Haldane townhouses on the west side of Liverneys, south of Square Lake, Section 9, from RT, one-family-attached residential district, to NNQ, which is Neighborhood Node Q District. Also on July 10, 2017, a preliminary site plan review, which is file number SPJPLN 2017-007, a proposed paradise park at Rain Tree Village, which is on the west side of John R between Big Beaver and Waddles. Access provided by sub off of North Lake Road. This is Section 23, currently zoned R1C, one-family residential district. There are no memorandums submitted by city council members this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I will call upon James Savage, Troy resident, who wishes to speak. Nice to see you, Mr. Savage.
Good evening Mayor Slater. Good evening Council. I would like to comment tonight on the town center plan, which the information I'm getting was from the local papers, so I'm assuming that it's fairly accurate, but I don't know how up to date it is. So, yeah, I only have three minutes to try to convince council to think and study very seriously the history of similar projects in Troy. One in particular comes to mind is the Convention Center, a project that in 2004 almost tore this city apart. Years of intense planning and hundreds of thousands of dollars for the project that the management desperately wanted, but the residents by a five-to-one vote rejected. Had it been, I'm sorry, no, had it been approved, we would have a silverdome on our hands. Other super projects that have been proposed by the management is the pavilions on the Kmart site, a 12-story mixed use on Big Beaver, a shopping village southwest corner of Big Beaver and John R, the sports stadium. These are all time-consuming, money-consuming projects that basically were not wanted by the residents. And let's not forget, we built out the DDA after they blew the last $2 million on the Big Beaver Rochester Road intersection. You're proposing a $180,000 retail when Macy's, JCPenney, Sears are closed in thousands of stores. You propose them beautiful walkways while our kids don't have sidewalks to the schools. Rebuilding City Hall and Library when we can't afford to open the library seven days a week. There are more businesses on Rochester Road than anywhere in Troy, or anywhere else in Troy. Yet, the 40 years I've been here, it is the most ignored and neglected. Small businesses come and go partly because the traffic is horrendous. Pedestrians risk their lives to cross over. One council member referred to Rochester Road as the armpit of Troy. So I must question why we are embarking on such an ambitious and risky project which has already cost hundreds of thousands of dollars when we can't afford to fix the lights in the community center. Am I cut off?
Well, that's your three minutes, Mr. Savage, but you're the only ones that signed up to speak this evening and I always like to listen to what you have to say, so.
I appreciate that.
If you'll hang on for one minute, I'd like to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Savage to finish his comments. So I will move that.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we allow Mr. Savage to, we'll suspend the rules and allow Mr. Savage to speak.
Yeah, I almost finished.
Hang on a second, Mr. Savage.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion on that? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. How about two more minutes?
Oh, less than that. Yeah, as I was saying, the, and I brought this to the attention of the management, that the lights in the community center are not working right and even now are not. And these are not huge budget items. And there's so many small improvements that would enhance the quality of life for all our residents, not just for those who use Big Beaver. In 2004, almost every civic leader in the Troy area, even in Lansing, said vote yes on proposal six. But over 80% of the residents said no. So, I'm thinking that, I don't know whether this has to come to a vote for the residents, but I think it should be kept in mind as to whether it's the management that wants this or the people of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening on items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Any follow-up discussion from council or staff? Next on the agenda, there are no council referrals, so we will move to council comments. Councilman Pennington?
Thank you Mayor. It is with heavy hearts that we report the passing of retired Fire Chief Bill Nelson. Bill still, Bill served the city Troy for 40 years in the Fire Department and was our Fire Chief for 22 years. As all who spoke at the funeral said, Bill was a tech guy who implemented many innovation, innovations and programs to the Troy Fire Department that would constantly keep the city Troy moving forward and saving the city thousands of dollars. We have two great chiefs sitting with us today and you realize, you know, how much you miss, you know, somebody when they, when they leave us. Bill was not large in stature, but he was a giant of a man who will be missed.
For sure. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councilman Henderson?
I'll echo that. When, when I first got on council, I asked if I could get tours of all the facilities in Troy, just so that I could get up to speed on, you know, what Troy has to offer. And Chief Nelson was the first tour that, that I got. He showed me every one of the, the fire stations. When we got to one of the fire stations, he, he allowed my daughter-in-law and all my grandkids to join us so they get a personal tour. They got on one of the fire trucks, they played basketball in one of the fire stations. Just a gem of a man, so he'll be missed.
For sure. Thank you. Mayor Protem Hoderek?
I think a lot of folks knew Chief Nelson as Fire Chief. If you were a resident, that was kind of your flavor of how you understood who he was. Many people know that, or maybe you don't know, I actually worked on staff here for a period of time for Cindy Stewart in Community Affairs. And it was a part-time role that gave me a wide view of the city and how it works. One of the many things I learned was more about our Fire Department and how it functions. And I saw in Chief Nelson, this man of tremendous integrity. He's known for his, that techie piece and forward vision. He, the impact he had, not only in our community but across the state is known, but there was this quiet demeanor he had here. Very solid leadership and just a ton of integrity and decorum. And that's what I remember most when I think about him. And to members of staff who worked with him and knew him and, I'm not probably putting into words a definition of his character that I, it's something that you experienced and you felt from him. and you felt from him. But if you can get what I'm saying on some level, please retain that. That is one of his greatest legacies, is what he taught fellow members of staff and how he worked with everyone so professionally and with great respect. Please remember that going forward, that integrity and that focus on being a quality public servant.
Thank you. Comments from council? Councilman Baker?
This is not about Chief Nelson. I came on council after he retired. But I've heard wonderful things about him, and I, you know, I know Chief Roberts, who's a wonderful chief as well. And I know that he's living up to expectations and has big shoes to follow, and he's doing a great job, so I will say that. But I want to welcome Kelly Mollinar to the city manager's office. And I also want to thank Maggie Hughes for her service in the city manager's office. She happens to be here tonight, but Maggie's not with us anymore, and Kelly stepped into that office. And I think it's a great addition to the staff, and I look forward to working in that capacity. So I just want to let that be known.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think it's a testament to a man when so many council members talk about someone. And we've heard so many speak this evening about Chief Bill Nelson. And I've known Bill for 35 years, probably, maybe more. He's a friend. He's someone that I've always said, built a foundation here in Troy along with other great leaders of this city. But he built a foundation, and he left a foundation for those that followed that made it much easier. I've had a lot of requests since I've been mayor to perform marriages. And I've always declined because I really didn't know the people that are making that request. And I always felt it was important to me to know who I was going to marry, although I was always given that authority to do that. And Bill called me in December and asked me if I would marry his daughter, Amy. And I think it's probably one of the highest honors I've ever had. Somebody asked me, and I was honored to perform the marriage of his daughter, Amy and Chris. And it's something that I will always treasure in my heart. I have that memory, and I always became, I thought, somewhat connected to Bill's family after that. And I miss him. I'm a better man for having known Bill Nelson. And this city is a better city because of Bill Nelson. God bless him. He's a wonderful man. Next on the agenda are reports. Is anyone on council... Councilwoman Abraham?
I just wanted to comment on P 2A, the Fire Station 4 update. Thank you, Chief Roberts, for the update. I think we're all looking forward to the station opening up, particularly the staff base there. I have to say, it's remarkable. I know the reports say we're about a week or two behind because of weather delays, but every time I pass by, there is tangible proof of progress, and it looks fantastic. I am looking forward to the ribbon cutting that's tentatively set for August, and really excited about it.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments on our reports this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. We are adjourned.